Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call the November 9th, 2021 Regular School Board Meeting to order. If I could have it quieted down in the audience, I would be most appreciative. Thank you. Now, I would like to ask Sarah Beth Wyatt to please give our invocation, and I would ask the audience to please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Wyatt?
Thank you. Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for an opportunity for us to all come here together under one roof to celebrate the wonderful things happening in our schools and work through some of our opportunities. And thank you for calling us all here, giving us the opportunity to serve, and appointing us for a time such as this. Thank you for every one of our students and staff members, and give us the ability to lead using your guidance. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. And now, I would like to ask, please remain standing, I would like to ask our very special guests, our twins, Jaden and Angelina Coletti, third graders from Elbert Elementary School, to come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Are you all ready? It's okay, it's gonna catch you. If you'll put your hand over your heart. Are you ready? Let's face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, the audience, please be seated, but if you would stay right where you are. All right. Well, that was a great job. I think they could hear you in the neighboring city of Bartow. Yeah. Yeah, you guys did a great job. Okay, Angelina, would you please be the one to introduce who you all brought with you today? You can stay right there so they can see in the microphone. Go ahead and tell us.
The people we brought today is mom and auntie.
Could mom and auntie please stand to be recognized?
When I call your name, I'm gonna give you a...
Who else? Who else came with you, Angelina? Will you want to tell us, Jaden, who else came with you?
Yes, who else came with us?
Who did?
Mr. Dawson.
That's right, Mr. Dawson, please stand and be recognized. Okay, tell me, Jaden, what is your favorite subject in school?
My favorite subject is science and PE.
Okay, and what do you want to be when you grow up?
A veterinarian.
Wow, that is awesome. And Angelina, can you tell us what you like best about school?
I love music.
Oh, do you sing, do you dance, do you...
We get to play the instruments.
Which one do you like?
Maybe the piano.
Awesome, wow. I'd love to hear you play sometime. That's wonderful. Now, you all may not realize, but these two young people are incredible spellers. Spellers. So, Angelina, can you spell the word "school"?
S-C-H-O-O-L.
Wow, right? And Jaden, can you spell the word "building"? Wow. You guys are awesome. We are so blessed to have you here today. You are wonderful young people, you're gonna do great things in life. We thank you, we thank your family for bringing you today, and your principal, and I hope you have an awesome time over Thanksgiving, and we'll hope to see you back here again sometime soon. Thank you. All right, thanks so much. You guys may be seated. Board members, the first item today is to accept our agenda. Superintendent Hyde, are there any revisions to the agenda as printed?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, members of the board, there are several revisions. Item P1, which is out-of-state travel, will now include Winter Haven Basketball Team, who will be traveling to Seattle on December 17th through December 21st. Item R1, the rate-lock agreement with PNC Bank, had an additional attachment provided. Item R2, naming of Cleveland Court Elementary Media Center, had an attachment included. Item U1, authority to advertise policy changes, had an item added. And item U2, waiver of conflict of interest, had an item added. Those two, as you recall, came on the request of the board attorney. Those are all the changes, Madam President.
Thank you, sir. So, the chair will entertain a motion to accept the agenda for November 9th, 2021, with the noted revisions. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. The next item today is our special recognitions. Mr. Hyde, would you lead us through our special recognitions today?
Madam Chair, under special recognitions, I will ask board member Dr. William Allen to please say a few words.
Within the last year, we have measured and logged quite a bit of time. Louis Mumford says, "With the invention of the clock, eternity ceased to serve as the measure and focus of human events." Each meeting, we began with the approval of minutes. I estimated that within the last year, we approved over approximately 4,400 minutes of board business, under your leadership. Within that measurement of time, we just want to say thanks for serving the last two years as a board member and as our board chair. You have led us through probably one of the most complicated times as we've had to navigate through the COVID scenario. Secondly, you've worked with staff, attorneys, the superintendent, to address school board personnel issues, along with hiring our new executive assistant to the board. Thirdly, you served as a chairman of the superintendent's search from June 2020 through June 2021, which, from my perspective, is probably one of the most important things that we do as a school board. Madam Chair, you have led us well, in all of this honoring all of our staff. I think remembering back to last December, what really stuck out to me as the youngest board member is you went through and you read off every individual department within the largest organization within our county, and that stuck out to me. Lastly, you demonstrate this sincere care for every student, just right over here as you were interacting with our two guests today. I mean, that is so impressionable, and that demonstrates to me your sincere care, not only for our staff, but our students. So although the clock may have moved the focus away from nature being the measurement of time, under your leadership, Mrs. Cunningham, you've kept our focus on the main goal, and the main goal, which is students first. So with that, I just want to present to you this beautiful plaque for your service.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Yes, yes.
Thank you so much. Wow. Thank you so much. I'm not gonna cry. Okay, if you'd like to continue with the special recognitions?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, that concludes special recognition, and thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. The next item is public comments on agenda items, and I don't have any cards. There are none on this time. Okay, y'all are making it easy for me tonight, this is wonderful. All righty. Well, there's different times to speak, so you'll be called up when the time is appropriate. There's three times within the board meeting that folks can speak, so each of your cards is being duly noted. Next, board members, we need to approve two sets of minutes. The first set of minutes is for the October 26th, 2021 School Board Meeting. The chair will entertain a motion to accept the October 26th, 2021 School Board Meeting Minutes as printed. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. The second set of minutes is for the October 26th Work Session. The chair will entertain a motion to accept October 26th, 2021 Work Session Minutes as printed. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. The next item is going to be the reorganization of the board, and before we do that, I would like for Mr. Bridges to go through and publicly explain what we did at our pre-retreat a week or so ago regarding board members' interests in serving as chair or vice chair as we go through reorganization tonight, because that was a meeting that we had, and I want to make sure that it's publicly acknowledged. So, Mr. Bridges, would you be so kind and read your email, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is just a quick recap of the conversation from the board's retreat last week. At that time, current Chair Lori Cunningham of District 2, having served two consecutive terms as chair, indicated she would decline nomination for further services chair or vice chair at this time. Sarah Fortney, District 3, expressed interest in serving as vice chair. Sarah Beth Reynolds Wyatt, District 4, expressed interest in serving as chair or vice chair. Kay Fields, District 5, expressed interest in serving as chair. Lynn Wilson, District 6, expressed interest in serving as chair. And Lisa Miller, District 7, expressed interest in serving as chair, as vice chair, I'm sorry. That does not preclude anyone here from expressing interest at any time prior to the reorganization, but that was the conversation that was had by the board on last Monday.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges, I appreciate that. At this time, I would like to turn the school board meeting over to Superintendent Hyde, who will conduct the reorganization of our school board. Superintendent Hyde?
Thank you. Good evening. It's a pleasure to welcome you to the November 9th, 2021 Meeting of the School Board of Polk County, Florida. The board chair has called this meeting in order to order, and pursuant to Florida Statute 1001.371, and I, as superintendent, will now act as chair until the organization of the board has been completed. At this time, we do request all cell phones and/or other devices be turned off or put into silent mode. Our next order of business is to elect a board chair. I will use the following procedure. In a moment, I will open the floor to nominations. After board members have had ample time to make all nominations they wish, I will ask for a motion to close the nominations, after which afterwards, I will conduct a roll-call vote by district, beginning with the first candidate nominated. If there is a majority for the first nominee, the election of the board chair will be complete, and we will move for the election of the vice chair. If there is not a majority in favor of the first nominee, there will be a roll-call vote for the second nominee. This process will continue until a board chair is elected by majority of vote. I will use the same method in the election of the vice chair. Are there any questions at this time? Seeing none, I will now accept nominations for chairman. Please note that nominations do not require a second. Dr. Allen?
Sure, I'll nominate Lynn Wilson.
Ms. Miller?
I'll nominate Sarah Beth Wyatt.
I will nominate Ms. Kay Fields.
Seeing no further, I will now entertain a motion that nominations be closed. I'll need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please indicate with an aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We now have our nominees. I will now conduct a roll-call vote in the order of nomination. The first nominee was Lynn Wilson, District 6. I will call each member by district. Please indicate whether or not you support the first nominee by saying aye. Dr. Allen?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Fortney?
Aye.
Ms. Wyatt?
Nay.
Ms. Fields?
Nay.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. Miller? We do not have a majority, so I will conduct a roll-call vote in order of nomination again. The second nominee was Sarah Beth Wyatt, Sarah Beth Reynolds Wyatt. I'll begin with District 1. Dr. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Cunningham?
Aye.
Ms. Fortney?
Aye.
Ms. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Fields? Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Ms. Miller?
Aye.
At this time, we have a majority with six ayes, one abstention, and so, at this time, Mr. Bridges? We now move on to vice chair, correct?
Yes, sir.
So our chairman-elect is now Ms. Sarah Beth Reynolds Wyatt. Congratulations. I will now accept nominations for the role of vice chair.
I nominate Lisa Miller.
Ms. Reynolds Wyatt?
I nominate Ms. Fortney.
Seeing none, I will now entertain a motion that nominations be closed. I will need a motion?
So moved.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please indicate with a nay vote. I will now conduct a roll-call vote in the order of nomination. The first nominee was Ms. Lisa Miller. I will call each member by district. Please indicate whether or not you support the first nominee by saying aye or nay. Ms. Cunningham?
Aye.
Ms. Fortney?
Aye.
Ms. Wyatt?
Aye.
Ms. Fields? Mr. Wilson? Ms. Miller? That is a majority with four ayes? So Ms. Lisa Miller will serve as vice chair. The next item is the designation of time, date, and place of school board meetings. I recommend that the board hold meetings on the fourth Tuesday of each month at 5:00 PM, with these meetings to be held in the school board auditorium or at the Jim Miles Center, if it's the school board auditorium at the administrative offices in Bartow, Florida. I will now entertain a motion to that effect.
Superintendent Hyde, I make a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent for time, date, and place of school board meetings.
Thank you. Need a second? Any discussion? All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same vote. The next item is approval of Resolution 2021-2022-06, authorizing the banks of Polk County, Florida, as depositories of school funds to honor and cash warrants drawn against said funds when signed by the board chair and secretary of the board. I will now entertain a motion.
Superintendent Hyde, I make a motion to approve Resolution 2021-2022-6, authorizing banks to honor and cash warrants signed by the board chair and secretary to the school board.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All, is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate with an aye vote.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the next item on today's reorganization agenda is my recommendation that the proceedings of school board meetings be held in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, revised, and the Rules of Administrative Procedures Act. I will now entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That completes the reorganization of the board. I will now turn the meeting over to the new chair, Ms. Sarah Beth Reynolds Wyatt.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. In the next order of business is the approval of our November 9th, 2021 Consent Agenda. Can I get a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The like sign for all those against? And the motion carries. Mr. Hyde, would you like to introduce our new administrators?
I would, and I believe he's here. So, at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Harry Fix. Mr. Fix was previously the senior planner in Osceola County, excuse me, and we have now recruited him and hired him on as Senior Director for Facilities and Operations. So, Mr. Fix, please come up to the mic. If you wish, if you have family with you, please feel free to bring them with you as well. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. I didn't bring my grandchildren, but they would have been almost as entertaining. But they're four and one, and they're at home and probably getting ready for bed. Thank you so much, Superintendent, for this opportunity to serve the community here of Polk County. I look forward to doing so. Of course, being the right-hand person of Mrs. Usher and trying to help her as much as I can with a daunting task that we have of responding to the development that is upon us here in Polk County today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Fix, and welcome to Polk County. We're thrilled to have you back. The next order of business is number R1, the rate-lock agreement with PNC Bank National Association. And the recommended action is a motion to approve a rate-lock agreement with PNC Bank National Association. Motion to authorize the execution and delivery with advice from PFM Financial Advisors LLC at a rate-lock letter agreement with PNC Bank National Association in connection with the refunding of the Refunding Certificates of Participation School Board of Polk County Master Lease Program Series 2017A, evidencing fractional undivided interest of the owners thereof in the basic rent payments to be made under a master lease purchase agreement by the School Board of Polk County, Florida, in connection with the proposed issuance of the Refunding Certificates of Participation Series 2021A. Under the Master Lease Purchase Agreement by the School Board of Polk County, Florida, provided that the net present value savings of the refunding based on the lock interest rate under the rate-lock letter agreement shall be at least $200,000, and the members of the Board, the Secretary, Special Counsel, Counsel to the Board, and officers, and the officers, attorneys, and other agents or employees of the district and the Board are hereby authorized to do all acts and things required of them by this motion or desirable or consistent with the requirements of this motion. Can I get a motion and a second?
So moved. Second?
All those in favor, please signify by saying "aye."
Madam Chair, could we have some discussion, please?
Absolutely.
We were told earlier in the work session that we would have an update on the interest rate, and we got one, and it's absolutely remarkable. So, I'd like to ask that we get that, make that public, please.
Ms. Jenkins, if you'll please approach.
Sorry, Mr. Wilson, I'm looking for my email I sent earlier. When we spoke earlier in the workshop, I mentioned a 2-point, I believe it was 2.68% interest rate. That was actually our estimated rate of return at the time. It's looking like it's going to be about 0.48%, so our rate of return should be between 1 and 2.68. Hence, the reason you all are approving the rate lock so that we can lock in a good rate now and prevent it from dropping any further. And to your question, Mr. Allen, it's with Regions Bank. Most of our certificates of participation are held with US Bank, but that one is with Regions.
Great, thank you.
You know, I know that Ms. Cunningham and Ms. Fields will remember. It wasn't so long ago that we struggled as a school district with our financial statements and our financial audits, and we were sided with numerous internal control issues. That was a number of years ago, and we fixed that. And now, we're blessed with clean audits. We're blessed with exemplary audits. And we were able to dispose of some derivatives that were creating some challenges for us as it relates to our credit rating and our interest rates. And folks used to ask me, why is it so important that we have clean audits and good financial statements? Well, one of the reasons is it helps your credit rating, it helps lower your interest rates. And here we are today, all these years later, I shouldn't say all these years later, some years later, and we have exemplary, we're getting exemplary rates. And that's a product of the work that we've done over the years to, you know, again, clean up the internal control deficiencies that we had, as well as dispose of those derivatives and replace them with more, with less volatile financial instruments. So, this is the culmination of that, and I think we should be very proud of that. So, thank you for that opportunity to share that with our public.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Next item on the agenda is item R2, naming of Cleveland Court Elementary Media Center. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And any discussion? Mr. Allen?
Madam Chair?
Dr. Allen?
Thank you so much. You know, thanks to Dr. Henry for moving this initiative forward. We discussed this briefly earlier today. Principal Rootenbar at Cleveland Court as well, for her leadership to recognize outstanding service within our schools. I'm not sure what your age range is out in the audience. We discussed this briefly this morning as well. We all admitted our age, not really. But as most individuals are ramping up to move towards retirement, at the age of 62, Mrs. Fowler started as a paraprofessional in kindergarten at Cleveland Court and the Media Center until her retirement at the age of 88. Even after retiring, she continued to volunteer and serve until our schools were closed due to COVID. Mrs. Fowler passed away on December 19th, 2020, at the age of 93. Clearly, clearly, she is a positive role model for all of us and exhibited a commitment to excellence in serving our school district. So, it's with that in mind that we're bringing this initiative forward to actually name the Media Center after Mrs. Fowler.
Thank you, Dr. Allen. Reading the letter, it's just one of those things that makes you smile as you read it. So, I appreciate your comments. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. We'll now move on to our public hearing. The recommended action for our public hearing is motion to approve the following updated policies. 8450.01, protective facial coverings during pandemic epidemic events. Thank you, Mr. Bridges.
Yes, ma'am.
The next policy will be 2260.01, Section 504 ADA prohibition against discrimination based on disability. Policy 3 will be Policy 5350, student suicide prevention awareness and screening. And Policy 7540.04, staff technology, acceptable use, and safety. We'll now have an opportunity for public comment on these items, and I'll start with the list that we have from those who signed in. So, first will be Danny Krueger, and next on deck will be Bobby Dees. Danny Krueger? Mr. Bridges, as he's coming up, would you mind going over our policies for public comments?
Ladies and gentlemen, as a reminder to all speakers addressing the Board this evening, this evening, there were three opportunities to address the school board. First, at the beginning of the meeting, before any official action was taken, there were no speakers signed up for that this evening. Again, at the end of the meeting, for any speakers wishing to address matters that are not on the agenda for action. Today, as there are public hearings scheduled, comments addressing the subjects of the public hearing may be delivered at this time. Persons wishing to speak who filled out a speaker card, which was available at the entrance, will be allotted three minutes to speak. When you're recognized by the Chair, please step forward, stand in the green square so your voice will be picked up by the microphone. Do not cross the red line. Please give your name and address. If you're affiliated with a group, you may announce that as well. Please direct all comments to the Chair and refrain from making personal attacks or using profanity. Also, please do not stand or otherwise block the vision of those behind you. Ladies and gentlemen, those are the rules. Thank you.
My name is Danny Krueger. I live at 4077 Dunmore Drive in Lake Wales. Esteemed members of the Board, Chair, Superintendent Hyde, last time we had this little chat, I left some information with you that was a link to 47 different studies confirming that masks have zero effect on the prevention or spread of COVID. And 32 more studies confirming that masks actually may have a detrimental effect on the psychological and physiological effect on children. So, and all I was ever looking for was one study that proved that masks were effective. Just one clinical study, and I never found one until recently. It seems like somebody else was looking for the same thing and did a FOIA request to the CDC. Her name was Cara Bell. And basically, what she asked for was any study that would prove the effectiveness of masks. The response from the CDC is as follows. And I apologize for the fuzziness. I had to copy it and then blow it up off of a Twitter post. The CDC is not aware of any randomized control, any randomized control trials that show that masks or double masks or cloth face coverings are effective against COVID-19. They go on to say there is experimental data describing how masks block particles. Well, particles are dust particles, and they're at least 20 to 40 times larger than the COVID virus. The other thing I copied onto that same page was a pre-print from Stanford's Dr. John Ioannidis. And what he lists there is the infection's survival rate. The top line is children from the ages of 0 to 19. The survival rate for those kids is 99.9973%. Virtually, no kids die from COVID. So, why the masks? And even if the masks were effective, which they obviously are not, they do cause harm. So, what are the risk-rewards of those things happening? So, given the really mountain of evidence against the effectiveness of masks, I would have to say that anybody who votes for a mask mandate is either willfully ignorant or just plain ignorant, neither of which is a good choice. So, I would ask you, please, don't even consider it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Krueger. Next up is Bobby Dees. Bobby Dees, and Glenda White is on deck.
Nancy Pelosi once said, "People are meant to be ruled," which is exactly what the Democratic Socialist Party wants to do, rule our country. Complete government control of our lives and livelihood. Even in our schools, school board members and some teachers think they know what's best for our kids and grandkids. Telling us, parents and grandparents, we have no say-so. Meanwhile, beating our kids, this socialist stew, this cauldron of crud, indoctrinating them to the leftist socialist agenda, mandating masks and vaccines, recognizing LGBTQ and what it means and normalizing it, and graphic sex education, and let's not forget CRT, or CRT by any other name. Parents and grandparents have come together over these issues. It's our kids, our right, our decisions. Education, not indoctrination. You work for us, and you can disagree if you want, but if you do, we'll just have to replace you. It's that simple.
Thank you, Mr. Dees. Glenda White? Glenda White, and on deck we'll have William Young. And Ms. White, if you could give us your name and address for the record?
Hi, my name is Glenda White. I live at 3851 Gaines Drive, Winter Haven. I am an advisory board member for the Florida Citizens Alliance and also the event director for the Winter Haven 912. First, I want to say that I support deletion of the forced masking policy that I saw on the website the other day. I'm hoping that you will vote to delete it. I believe forced masking was political from the beginning. Critical race theory is outlined by the Left as a myth. BLM, Antifa, NAACP, the Southern Poverty Law Center, and others, backed by socialist politicians and individuals, promote systemic racism to keep voters of color on the leftist political plantation. These groups are bigoted against anyone who doesn't follow their political point of view. Any person of color who doesn't hold leftist views is attacked by the media labeled Uncle Tom and other vile names by socialist politicians and media. Examples of this disgusting behavior abound. The socialist Left refuses to allow the nation to heal. They use the education system in particular, critical race theory, to keep false notions of racism festering, secure their voting base, stay in power, and continue getting rich while our kids graduate without being able to read a contract or run a household budget. They need their voter base to remain ignorant, without life skills and true knowledge of their nation. Florida is beyond ready and capable of withdrawing from funding the NEA and creating our own education system, keep Florida money in Florida, and give parents full school choice. Since Florida school boards continue to push CRT and Common Core concepts on innocent children rather than properly educating them, it's time for full school choice, where the public education system cannot touch a dime unless the parent directs it to them. Cultural responsive teaching is being promoted to being taught in Polk's schools. It's obvious that Polk CRT is CRT with a different name. It has been rejected by the parents of Polk County schools because it's full of hate, biased, irresponsible, and harmful to kids. The Polk school system continues to hold on to horrific pornographic materials and will not commit to removing these items from recommended reading lists. The online survey Portrait of a Graduate is an insult. It's nothing more than Common Core-based nonsense that doesn't address real-life skills. It should be removed immediately. I've provided you with a copy of a proposed CRT directive to review, and I expect you to pass it. We are now working with the Governor and the State Department of Education to give parents full school choice. We are educating the State Office about Polk's schools' version of CRT and educating parents about the Hope Scholarship. Clean up Polk's public school system. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. William Young? And then next on deck will be Jim Taggett. If you could say your name and address for the record, please?
Certainly. My name is Bill Young. I'm at 1007 Joyce Road in Lake Wales, Florida, and a full-time resident, not part-time. I'm also a father of four children that I helped raise. First thing I'd like to say is good evening. Asian-American, African-American, Native American, et cetera. What unites all these groups of peoples is American. Our country is not perfect. It never has been. But I believe what unites us is much greater than that which divides us. No child should be taught to despise anything about themselves, nor should they be muzzled. You cannot build unity and understanding upon division and hate. I am speaking out against CRT and masks. We can craftily word things to deceive their intent. I believe we must put an end to listening to those whose intent is to divide us and throw out our unity and our- throw out our unity and our progress. I am reminded of an incident between my younger brother and our mother at a lake in western New York as a kid. My mother's cat was drenched, and my mother questioned my brother if he had thrown her cat in the lake. He said, "No." I was walking on the dock with Queenie, that was the cat's name, and just gave her no room to walk. I submit with CRT and cloth mask mandates, et cetera. We are giving our children no room to walk together. Thank you for your time and consideration. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Next we have Jim Taggett, and then on deck will be Lola Smith.
Hi, good evening. Yeah, my name is Jim Taggett, eleven-five-two-five-three, Limberlost Lane in Lake Wales. And I'm going to speak about masks or against the masks, a mandatory mask for children in schools. And I've got way too much information here for three minutes, so I'm just going to fly right through it. This first is from Frontiers in Medicine in regard to a Flemish study, and they took masks, brand-new masks, some were cloth, some were surgical masks, and they wore them, people wear them for four hours. And they did, they counted the bacteria, it's called a colony-forming unit, that's what they measure bacteria with, the number of bacteria. Now, on the plain cotton mask, they went from fourteen-hundred colony-forming units prior to the test to a hundred-and-forty-three-thousand after the four hours. So, that's bacteria that the little kids are holding right up here in their mouth like that. Okay? And then with the surgical mask, they started out with about eighty-six-hundred, excuse me, eight-hundred, eighty-six, excuse me, colony-forming units. At the end of the four hours, it went to a hundred-and-eighty-one, eighteen-thousand colony-forming units. And again, that's all these bacteria that the little kids are holding up in their mouth. And there was a group of parents in Gainesville that did a similar study on their own, and what they found was eleven different bacteria. And these tests were capable of finding viruses, but they didn't find any viruses. But they found eleven bacteria, including staph, myobacterium that causes tuberculosis, bacteria that causes meningitis, Lyme disease, diptheria, Legionnaires' disease, and a host of others. Okay? Keep in mind, these tests could have found viruses, but there were no viruses to find. And, I got it. Okay. Well, anyway, I have too much information, only a minute, a minute left. But what we're doing is we're forcing these kids to protect people from diseases that they don't have. The kids don't get it. The kids don't get this disease. They're not, they don't, it doesn't, it doesn't affect, it doesn't affect them. There's a study here from, from England, the first year of the, of the virus, twelve months, twenty-five kids in England got, died of COVID. Fifteen of them had serious neuromuscular diseases prior to that. They were, they were already sick. Okay? It does not, you know, we're harming these kids, you know, they, they're, they're not able to learn nonverbal communication, we're covering up their faces. A lot of communication is done with the mouth and expressions. They're missing out on that. These are, you know, these are little six, eight-year-old kids when they're supposed to be learning this stuff, and, you know, we're depriving them of that. You know, the, making them wear this mask, it's, it's useless, it's unnecessary, maybe it's protecting the kid, the teachers from the disease that the kids don't have, but you're harming the kids, you know, at best, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Taggett. Lola Smith. And then on deck will be Kathy Buckloo. And Lola, if you could say your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name's Lola Smith, and I'm from Bala Elementary School, and I'm ten years old. Every morning, as I get ready for school, I put on a mask. I wear it to protect my teachers and my classmates. I'm aware that not all of my classmates and teachers will be in masks. I'm aware that they will not choose to protect me the way they do, I do them. I'm very aware that going to class means risking my health. Each morning, as I get ready for school, I remind myself why I put myself in that danger. I risk my health to go to school so that I can receive an education. I need an education so that I can someday be the president. I will become president so that I can ensure this never happens again. You see, I care more about the children who don't even exist yet than I do about the ones standing in front of you pleading for help right now. I want all of you to take a minute to remember why you're sitting on this board, why you chose the school board. You see, working for children is a privilege. Many teachers understand this. That's why they continue to work, despite being underpaid, despite their classrooms being full. Despite you putting their lives in danger with your refusal to mandate masks. Those teachers are dying. Meanwhile, you sit in your chairs and talk about how this is not your job, not your job to protect teachers, not your job to protect students. Screw your job. Your position is a privilege. Act like it. I'm your child. All the students of Polk County are your children. Our, our teachers, your coworkers, they are your neighbors. You have the power to protect us. You have your privilege to do something good. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lola. Next will be Kathy Buckloo. And on deck will be Sarah Knappenberger, and I'm really sorry if I mispronounced that.
Hi, I'm Kathy Buckloo, and I live in South Lakeland. You have my address on your little blue form. I am here to advocate for the removal of Board Policy eight-four-five-oh dot oh-one. I watched last month as speakers shared the names of friends and family members and coworkers that passed away, and honestly, I'm sure it touched you, it really touched me a lot. I mean, we all have this universal grief, just like our young speaker before me expressed. We have this universal grief over the loss of people who died. It's just that, though that's a starting point for us, it, that we have this shared grief, we have a difference of opinion on what the efficacy of masking really is. There's no doubt where the science and the data analysis are when it comes to efficacy of masking. I provided a nine-page list of professional studies, data analyses, and scientific evidence, if you want to go through them, and they demonstrate that masking does not save lives from COVID death. But in fact, in the unsterile environment of daily life, especially among children, it contributes to diminished immunity, health risks due to excessive exposure to carbon dioxide, and a host of other health issues, including emotional distress. I understand the need for something, to believe in something, in the face of this grief that we all share. But to believe that masks protect you against COVID-19 is simply that it's just a belief, a belief that is not based on fact. So, I'm not angry with anyone. I just want people to know the truth. There are many effective ways to save lives, such as the monoclonal antibodies, the use of medications, therapeutics, and supplements that all diminish the effects of the virus. Let's join together to get behind these proven lifesaving mechanisms and drop the battle for an ineffective, invasive, and yet even sickness-inducing mask. It is out of loving concern for the health and well-being of our children that I'm speaking out tonight. School board policy should not be based on belief where a plethora of scientific evidence proves it to be empirically false. I do not want to take away anyone's right to believe, so please, wear a mask if you are willing to take the inherent risks of wearing one. But school board members, do not force yours or others' beliefs on me, my children, and my grandchildren. That is cruel and unfair treatment of others by those in authority. Oh, by the way, that's the definition of tyranny. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Buckloo. Next we have, next we have Sarah Knappenberger, and on deck is Jennifer Technip. Sarah Knappenberger.
I'm Jennifer. Am I supposed to be up here now?
I have Sarah and then Jennifer, but if you want to switch, that's fine, too.
Okay.
All right, we're going to go with Jennifer.
I thought I was speaking at the end. My name is Jennifer Technip, and I am a teacher. I've had three decades worth of experience in the public education arena. I am a, I have been a coach, I have been a certified teacher, I have been the lead teacher, a professional development facilitator for all of the districts that I've served. And right now, I know that there's nothing, there's nothing that we can say to you about changing your minds about these masks, because I've sat in the positions that you're in right now, and you've already made them up. And the sad thing is, is right now, history is repeating itself. History is repeating itself. These masks that you're wearing, these are our yellow stars.
Exactly.
And as, there's proof, there's so much proof out there. As a teacher that is wanting to teach all of my students to think critically, to research, if you research using Google, okay, a browser Google, you're going to find a completely different set of standards than if you research using DuckDuckGo. And that's what I would be teaching my students right now if I could go back into a classroom. I love teaching, love it, but I refuse to go back into a classroom and indoctrinate people to be sheep, to just obey and fall afro. I was really good at making people, my, my students, I loved it, to getting them to classroom management, which is now, right now, what everybody in here is doing. I see that you're perfectly socially distanced, you're following the rules, and as long as we follow the rules right now and we continue to comply, we are going to follow everybody right to the slaughter. We are in, we are, history again is repeating itself, and we have to stand up and say, "No more." So, I know that in the positions that y'all are in, the teachers, you're teachers, you've got teachers that are scared, they don't want to lose their jobs. It just so happens that I happen to be blessed to live with a family that understands and that they are awake to the truth, that if you were to research, really research, you would see that these masks are what are killing people, these vaccines are what are killing people, these mandates are unconstitutional, and they are going to bring lawsuits to every school district. It's coming. You want to be on the right side of history. You need to research before, I'm praying, I'm praying, God, we need God, we need love of God, love of country, and love of family. That's what we need to bring back. And I can promise you this, the school system is not going to be able to guarantee you that. The only way for you to guarantee that your children get what they need is for you to take them out, the funding is what will hurt them, as well as lawsuits. Funding, take the funding out, take your kids out of the school. Respectfully, I would try if it was your own children to do the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Technip. Sarah Knappenberger. And then on deck will be Emmett Purvis. I'm so sorry if I'm retchanting your name, but if you could say your name and address for the record.
It's Sarah Knappenberger, and y'all have my address on the form. Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to call attention to another hot topic. I'm sorry, y'all, I know it's probably been a heated debate at all of these recently. The reason I want to bring this to everyone's attention is because things are uncertain as it is, and I just want to make sure that as parents, I have two kids that attend the public school systems here, that we are aware of anything coming down the pipeline. So, I got an email the other day, and it was regards to the new telehealth program offering immediate access to students for mental and physical health services. So, in the email, and I'm not sure, y'all are aware of this program that I'm talking about, it says that students can get access for medical professional mental health clinician right from school. In order to participate in this, parents need to opt-in to the service. And I realize that in most instances, this is probably a very innocent service that you're offering for kids to be able to get health services at school. My worry as a parent is that if we are allowing things to happen medically at school, that that could open the door for vaccines to be administered without parental consent. That is my concern, that's why I wanted to bring this up, because according to the World Health Organization, they're now saying that your child's presence in school counts as informed consent. So, you need to be aware that when your kids are in school, some places are considering that informed consent. So, I just wanted to bring that up, and as a parent, I would like clarification that this service that's being provided isn't a doorway for forced injections down the road.
Madam Chair, while it's not customary for the board to provide a response in public participation, I will address this. Parents were not only provided with a phone call, they were also provided with an email correspondence that contained links to all of the information as to what is permissible and what is not. There are no injections. The only service is if a family opts in. And again, you don't have to participate in school, families have the option to still engage with remote telehealth or teletherapy outside of the school day. So, again, a very comprehensive message was sent home to families clarifying this. These are simply over-the-counter prescription, not prescriptions, excuse me, over-the-counter medications that can, with, again, with a parent's full consent, if their child comes to school, has a low-grade fever, we could administer Tylenol in the absence of the parent having to come pick up their child. So, no, there is no gateway to vaccination or injections, it is not permissible, it is not part of the contract. And again, I would ask you and others to do their due diligence and read through the information, there's plenty of videos in there as well, and I think it's important that our community become educated on this topic, because we addressed it earlier today in the workshop, so there are videos, there's all kinds of information out there as to what it is and what it's not, and a family can also rescind their consent at any given time as well. So, we document and collect that as of, as of last evening, since we rolled it out yesterday, I believe we're going to get confirmation today of nearly a thousand families who have already provided consent. The whole goal of the program is to eliminate a barrier to healthcare for some of our families because of the timeliness in which it can be attained, also the costs associated with it. So, what this tries to do, and it is being utilized successfully in multiple counties in the state of Florida, we're the third that will be launching it, and so I'm proud of the fact that the board agreed to do this, and it may not, it's not for everyone, and we're very clear in that. This is completely voluntary, and even in the case where parents provide consent, we still initiate contact with the family to ensure that they're aware of what's going on. Families also receive a written summary upon completion of the visit, and if there is a recommendation for a follow-up visit with a physician, then there's also, that communication goes directly to the families because they've provided that consent with all their contact information, as well as if the physician, the online treating physician, makes a recommendation for an actual prescription, then they send the prescription to the family, or we can print it out at school, send it home, so the parent can have it, so they can gain access to it after hours. So, no, there is no COVID-related involvement at all.
Right, and I understand that this is, the origins are very innocent. I'm just bringing it to everyone's attention because as we've seen in the past, something can start out as just this positive thing and then end up being something that we don't want.
Yeah, it's not, it's not within the scope of what the board's approved, it's not within the scope of our contract, it's not even permitted at this time.
That's good to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Hyde. Emmett Purvis. And if you could give us your name and address for the record.
I'm Emmett Purvis. I live at six-fifty-five East Stewart Street in Bartow, and I'm not here to bash anybody. I'm a veteran, I'm standing on ground that I used to work on, Highland City Cannon Plant used to be right here. I attended Highland City School, I have four kids who attended Highland City School, graduated from Bartow, they're all degreed and all employed. That's because we're free Americans. I'm a veteran, I was entrusted with the secret clearance, and I'm here to say, I served in Korea, and I want each one of you to go home tonight and pull up the peninsula, Google the peninsula of Korea, and look at South Korea, and look at North Korea. You want socialism? Look at socialism, and that's where we're headed. I do not like, I do not trust the government of this United States, and I'm a special forces soldier. What's coming out of Washington and the Left? What's coming out of Washington and the left has got to be stopped. I'm 80 years old, but I'm gonna live in my dying breath fighting for this country and the way it was, not the way it's gonna be. And I want everybody here to wake up. Thank you, thank you.
And that concludes the public comment. And that concludes the public comment for our public hearing. I will now hear a motion.
I submitted a blue card at 4:22.
And what is your name?
Doyle Brown.
And that, we have you down for speaking at the end. This is just for mask mandates on the public hearing?
This is just mask mandates?
Just for, that's what we're doing right now for the public hearing? And then we'll, no problem. All right, so for our policy updates, I'll look, I'll hear a motion to approve the following updated policies, 8450.01, 2260.01, 5350, and 7540.04.
Madam Chair, could we break these out and do them one at a time, please?
Yes, we certainly can. So I'll first hear a motion to approve 8450.01, which is protective facial coverings during pandemic epidemic events. I'll now entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, put any discussion?
I think we need some comments, please.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, so this is actually not approving face coverings, this is the deletion of the policy related to face coverings, I think that's important for the public to know.
That is correct.
So, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Okay, so, just to be clear to everybody in the audience, we are voting right now to delete policy 8450.01 from school board policy. Is that correct, board members?
That's correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure everybody understands what we're doing, because it's, in our stuff, it's all crossed off in red, which means it will be deleted from school board policy going forward.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other discussion, Ms. Fields?
So Superintendent Hyde, my question to you is that this policy basically says that in the case of a pandemic, that you would have the authority to mandate face masks, face coverings. That's what this is currently saying. And what we're saying is that we're removing that. And so my question to you is that if there is another variant, and we're removing this, what do we have in place to have a discussion on what our next step would be?
So I'll defer to Mr. Bridges in a moment. It's my understanding that this policy was adopted due to the initial time when masks were mandated. There was a concern that there was, from our community stakeholders, that there was a lack of transparency and opportunity for family members and stakeholders to provide feedback. The board also wanted to bring it back within their scope and their realm and control and authority, so that one individual could not supersede the authority of the elected officials. And quite honestly, while I may agree or disagree with that policy, it's what the board chose to do. At this time, if the board deletes this, it does not delete my authority, it does not change statutorily my authority to make decisions in emergencies. As it relates specifically to a pandemic, I'll have to defer to Mr. Bridges, but there is statutory language in school code that authorizes me to do school closures and whatnot for emergencies. But as it relates to masking, there is nothing specific in that piece of legislation that I'm aware of that speaks to that. But Mr. Bridges, if you could clarify further, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, I'd be delighted. The school board adopted this policy in response to the initial wave. Different districts did it different ways, some adopted emergency policies with abbreviated due process. School Board of Polk County adopted it through the regular rulemaking process. Since that time, there's been a great deal of water under the bridge, and as you're aware, there have been a series of executive orders issued by the governor of the state of Florida, followed by rulemaking by both the Department of Education and State Department of Health, in which the current status of that is that the governor has forbidden school districts by executive order from adopting mask mandates. It has been challenged legally, and thus far, the courts have upheld the governor's right to do that. So any district, right now, policy or no policy, any district that chooses to mandate masks is in violation of the governor's executive order and the rules that have been promulgated. And those districts, some of those districts have received financial sanctions from the state of Florida, and we, most recently, the court, an administrative law judge ruled last Friday dismissing the renewed challenge from the districts, several of the districts that had defied the governor's order. So some time ago, the School Board of Polk County lifted the requirement that students wear masks. Your policy does not require students to wear masks, it simply, it allowed the superintendent the authority to require the grownups to wear masks, but the school board would have the authority to require students to wear masks in time of pandemic, and the school board has lifted that requirement. So there is no mask requirement in Polk County. This, the policy, there's been a great deal of outpouring of public sentiment regarding the policy, and the board entertained the suggestion of removing that language at its work session two months ago. So what is before you is the removal of this language. Now, we don't have a crystal ball that allows us to look into the future, so we don't know what it may hold. If there is, if there are further waves, further episodes, that may change the environment in Tallahassee, it may change the environment in the state, it may change the environment elsewhere, but at this point, that is all speculative. So what is before you right now is the deletion of that language from the policy. The board's statutory and constitutional authority remains, whether there's a policy or not, and if you deem it necessary in the future to adopt either an emergency rule or another policy, you're free to do that.
And thank you for that answer, and I think that Superintendent Hyde answered it originally, so I just wanted to make sure that we did have that statutory.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm looking for a motion for policy 8450.01.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to delete School Board Policy 8450.01 from School Board Policy.
Second.
Second. And any further discussion? Sorry, Ms. Cunningham?
Thank you. Yes, I agree with most of the folks that spoke tonight, I think I've been on record speaking out a few months ago, on August the 24th, about how I feel. We live in a beautiful United States of America, land of the free and the brave, and I will never vote to mask a student, a teacher, a child, a grandparent, anyone that works for us. However, I respect a family that may be immunocompromised, and if a family chooses to wear a mask, or a child that comes to school is asked to wear a mask, I think that is totally acceptable, and I respect your choice to do so. I just don't want anyone to tell me or my family how I should live my life and whether or not I should wear a mask. So I am in support of deleting this, we've talked about it for a long time now, and I do feel that it is important to move forward, and we continue to do the best that we can with the information that we have. There's probably as many informational websites that say this helps or that helps, it's a world that we live in, and as someone said tonight, it's unfortunate that we are being divisive instead of standing together as this beautiful United States of America that we're so blessed to live in. So at least for us, for me personally, I'm going to support this tonight, as I made the motion, and I thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to speak.
Any further discussion? Mr. Wilson?
I think that there's a better option in handling another surge or a variant, and I've talked about this, and I'm going to continue to talk about this, I think we need a virtual option at some point in time, should we have another surge, and even if the state isn't willing to support us in that matter, I'm hoping that as a board, we can agree to implement that and find money locally to pursue that option, should we have another surge. So I don't think that facial coverings are going to, it's going to be something that is going to be, is going to help with those surges moving forward. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. Next item on our public hearing is a motion to approve... The next item on our public hearing is a motion to approve the following updated policy, 2260.01, Section 504 ADA prohibition against discrimination based on disability. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. The next policy is policy 5350, Student Suicide Prevention Awareness and Screening. I'll now hear a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And the motion carries. And our last policy is 7540.04, Staff Technology Acceptable Use and Safety. I'll now hear a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. And that concludes our public hearing. We'll now move on to the superintendent's report. Superintendent Hyde?
Madam Chair, members of the board, the next work session and board meeting will be held on December 14th, 2021. The work session will begin at 12:30 PM, and the board meeting will start at 5:00 PM. Both meetings will be held at the Jim Miles Professional Development Center, located at 5204 US Highway 98 South in Lakeland. That concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you. We'll now move on to our attorney's report. Mr. Bridges?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item I have is a request for authority to advertise policy changes to School Board Policy 1420, Benefits for Administrative Staff, 4420, Benefits for Support Staff, 1430.03, Sickly for Administrative Staff, and 4430.03, Sickly for Support Staff.
I'll now entertain a motion to approve the authority to advertise for these public notices for December 14th.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The second item I have were two requests for the board to waive potential conflicts of interest that were submitted by counsel that represents the school board in your certificate, certificates of participation, bond issues. Those are Holland and Knight and Neighbors Giblin. Neighbors Giblin serves as disclosure counsel for the board, and Holland and Knight serves as bond counsel for the board. Both of these attorneys, these law firms have represented the board historically, and their firms are large, and they represent a multitude of clients, including the PNC Bank, which is involved in this refinance. Both firms have requested waiver of any potential conflict, they have asserted that they can diligently and competently represent the board, they have fully disclosed any potential conflict in accordance with the ethical standards applicable to attorneys, they have obtained written waivers from PNC Bank already, and they have represented that they will preserve the confidentiality of both clients in this transaction. I consider this to be a routine transaction, the board has done this in previous cop's transaction, transactions, and I recommend that you authorize the execution of waivers as requested by Holland and Knight and Neighbors Giblin.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. I will now entertain a motion to approve the waiver of conflict of interest requested by the attorneys from Holland and Knight and Neighbors, who routinely represent the district in bond issues because of other representation of PNC Bank by those firms.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, while the waiver is an action required of the school board, because the privilege belongs to the school board, we've set those up in such a way that superintendent should be able to execute them on behalf of the board, now that the board has voted. And thank you, Madam Chair, that's all I have. Welcome to the chair.
Thank you so much. And we do not have an auditor's report tonight, so we'll move on to board members' reports, and we'll start with Dr. Allen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple comments. I wanted to say thanks to Reba Coyle for inviting me to hang out with our rock stars, Steve Cochran and Brian Warren, and just this whole group, I was thinking they were the dream team, as they were conceptualizing and just building that beautiful communication strategy around our open enrollment. I was just visiting with some friends that came from all over the United States to come together, college friends, and just sharing all about our magnet choice programs, the academies, and, you know, that's not present in other school districts around the United States. So it's a great thing to talk about, but I'm very appreciative of what we're doing as a district to extend that open enrollment period all the way until the beginning of the start of school year. Secondly, thanks to Principal Levine for the invite to the Harrison School of the Arts musical, Hunchback of Notre Dame. And, I mean, I remember when COVID struck, I was sitting in the Melvin Art Gallery at Florida Southern College, and when we communicated to our art students that they were not going to be able to exhibit their artwork due to the clampdown of COVID and just the shutdown, and just what was happening and transpiring, and I remember just the air being sucked out of that space. So to be able to go to our performance and see full-on the arts being honored and recognized was very rewarding to our students, our staff, and the audience was alive. So I'm thankful that we are moving ahead and finding some sense of normalcy to continue honoring the arts within our schools. And then, congratulations to our Madam Chair for a job well done tonight, just moving right into the sea and leading us through this meeting. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Allen, and next I'll go to Mrs. Cunningham.
Thank you, and let me be the first to congratulate Mrs. Sarah Beth Wyatt in being elected tonight as our new chairman of the board. We're so excited to have you lead us. You're a very young, very smart, very talented young lady, and I know you're going to do great things on our school board as our leader. So congratulations, and I look forward to working under your leadership. I too want to take a moment and congratulate Lisa Miller, who was elected as our vice chairman this evening. We're excited to see your leadership start to grow as time continues, and look forward to working with you as you step into that new role. So congratulations, ladies. Yesterday, I had the honor and privilege to accompany Superintendent Hyde and his team for the prize patrol for District 2. Congratulations to Mrs. Robin Hamrick, kindergarten teacher at Davenport Elementary School, for being awarded the Teacher of the Year finalist for District 2. Mrs. Hamrick is a role model teacher, and as a team leader, she assists other teachers with lesson planning for grades K through 5. with lesson planning for grades K through five. Mrs. Hamrick communicates in an extraordinary way with her students, creating an exciting and energetic classroom. Mrs. Hamrick is truly an amazing educator. Once again, congratulations and best wishes to Mrs. Hamrick. Additionally, we awarded the school-related employee of the year finalist for District Two to Mrs. Sandy Als, who is the school nurse at Davenport Elementary School. She was in the nursing profession for over 30 years and decided she wanted to positively impact the young lives of children. So she decided to come to Polk County Public Schools. She has created a warm and inviting atmosphere inside her clinic where students feel that they are genuinely being cared for in such a way that visiting the nurse is sometimes how those students get through the day. Think about COVID and you can see where she's made a tremendous impact. Mrs. Als is a loving caregiver and truly makes a difference in the lives of her students throughout the school day. So congratulations and best wishes to Mrs. Als as the District Two finalist for our school-related employee of the year. And I would be remiss if I didn't do a shout out to Principal Shannon Brown for having both winners for District Two in her school. That was pretty amazing to experience yesterday. I want to thank you, Dr. Allen, for the chairman's plaque and your most kind words. As my tenure as chairman of the board comes to a close, I have been reflecting on the past two years serving in this position. I can honestly say that I am so very appreciative to those that offered me a helping hand during the two most difficult years in the history of the Polk County School Board. I have been blessed by the wisdom, institutional knowledge, kindness, encouragement, and faithfulness of so many of our staff, and you all know who you are, and many community leaders across our school district who reached out to me when I needed it most. I am forever grateful to each of you for believing in me and always being there when asked. I will continue to pray for wisdom and discernment for our school board as we move forward with our new superintendent and staff. Finally, as we approach the season of Thanksgiving, I would like to wish all of my colleagues and staff a safe and restful Thanksgiving. It is my sincere hope that you are able to take the time to reflect on your blessings as we all have special ones that we need to be grateful for. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. And Ms. Fortney?
Congratulations, Ms. Wyatt and Ms. Miller. I have full confidence. November 8th through the 12th is National School Psychologist Appreciation Week and I wanted to recognize all of our outstanding staff that work in that position. It's definitely part of the team that makes us row and help kids. November 18th is the National Parent Involvement and Great American Teaching Day. I want to thank you all for the invites to be in your schools, but I will be with Polk Vision that day. But invite me anytime. November 19th is actually Substitute Educator Day. I want to thank you for our needed subs and for taking on that huge responsibility. I want to do a personal appreciation for our veterans and their families for protecting our freedom. My family is full of veterans and I know there are so many ways that we can honor and get involved in recognizing those veterans. District Three prize patrol, which I'm very proud of, what a success, the whole thing. At Barto High School, oh my goodness, they had the band, they had the cheerleaders because, you know, Barto just does it better. Our Teacher of the Year was Ms. Hanger and then we went to Floral Avenue and Tink, I'm sorry, I don't know Tink's real name, I just call her Tink. She is our school-related employee of the year and I'm looking forward to seeing them in January be honored. And I was also able to recognize Tammy Rule, our assistant principal for the entire district of the year there. So, yeah, Barto does great things. I also ran into Dr. Allen and his wife at the Harrison musical. I was in the parking lot parking cars. But, yeah, that's the first time I ever went, was able to attend. I want to thank them for extending that invitation. What a talented cast and crew, just amazing. I want to do a huge shout out to Hearst Chapel, my Hearst Chapel family in Winter Haven. They hosted a luncheon and basically a home shopping experience for many of our international There are too many people helping on that list to even think, but they know who they are and many of our school staff and families in the community have helped our global teachers adapt and adjust everything from rides to church to you name it. And Hearst Chapel put on, they had a luncheon, they had, it was like a shopping mall. They had so many things for them because, you know, you don't think about stuff like that when you relocate. And then finally to our awesome, awesome, awesome band directors, band parents, and band students. I know they are the hardest working group in any school I've ever been in. They are 24/7 committed. I want to congratulate them all on their MPA performances and you all are the reason that pre-K through 12 public schools just do it better. Thank you, Madam Chair Wyatt, as in Derek's wife.
That is correct. Thank you so much, Ms. Fortney. And next will be Ms. Fields.
Thank you. Want to congratulate Chair Wyatt and also Vice Chair Miller. I just wanted to do a special shout out to the Teacher of the Year finalist for District Five. I think we've all experienced the prize patrol. I want to thank the staff for their hard work and making sure that everything went smoothly. The Teacher of the Year finalist for District Five is a physical education teacher at Churchwell Elementary. And the school-related employee finalist is also a PE instructor pair at Rochelle School of the Arts. And I've never known us to have, in my school district, both having the same interests and skill set. And both of them have been very giving, they're very well respected by their peers and by the students. Remember vividly at Rochelle School of the Arts, the band played and the cafeteria was full of students and when Coach Marion came down, they just, it was like we were at a football game and they were just cheering and so proud of her. And the same at Churchwell. A lot of respect for the hard work that they do each and every day and we want to congratulate them and we will be expecting great things as we venture into the month of January. Also wanted to piggyback on Ms. Fortney as it relates to the MPA event. I wasn't able to attend, but I heard it was just very refreshing and a lot of great talent. I wanted to specifically do a shout out to Kathleen High School. I heard that they were on top of their game and their rating, I think, was excellent in all areas. So we're very proud of them as well. And then Thursday is Veterans Day and there was an event at the Veterans Memorial Park in Lakeland. It was unveiling and the dedication of the World War II African-American monument. And it was a big event and there were three men that were recognized for their service and the combat and comeback support units, both overseas and in the United States. And one of those would be Mr. J.J. Corbett. Mr. J.J. Corbett served on the school board here years ago. And also Mr. Lemuel Gatheres, who is a former mayor in Winter Haven, and he was recognized, he's no longer with us, and also a gentleman by the name of Mr. Herman Jenkins in Lakeland. And my understanding, if my memory serves me correctly, I think Mr. Corbett is in his late 90s and Mr. Jenkins is as well. So that's a great accomplishment for all three of them. And this monument was made possible through the support of the City of Lakeland, Polk County Veterans Council, the NAACP Lakeland Branch, the Corbett and Gatheres families, Lakeland Rotary Clubs, TMJ Construction Services, Central Florida Business Diversity Council, Florida State Representative Sam Killebrew, and American Legion Post Four, Karen L. and Joelle Ruthen, Gary Clark family, Rita and Don Savage, and Marion and Thomas Evans. We want to thank them for their vision and for their insight as it relates to recognizing these three outstanding men. And I think that might be the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. And just to keep everyone on their toes, I'm going to skip around a little bit and go to Ms. Miller next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Wyatt, we'll get used to that. First, I want to say I appreciate the veterans on this board and the fact, running for chair, that you gave the opportunity to the younger two. I hope Ms. Wyatt and I serve you well and we'll be leaning on you all for, I'm sure, great advice and the sunshine, right? Mr. Bridges? I'll be quick. I visited Southeastern University and met all the deans there. I appreciate the interns that we get out of that school. We use them from all different grade levels and we get interns from other schools as well, but they really want to be involved. If you knew her mother who had a donkey, it got a little emotional there because a little girl walked up and asked her at the same time the donkey was there, "Where's your mom and what's her name?" And so it's amazing to see the work of the rights still in our school system and what she's doing at McLaughlin is great. So if you have, they have chickens, they sell the eggs, they have all kinds of animals. If you haven't been to McLaughlin, I would encourage you to visit and support that program. The typical ed students as well as the ESE students take care of all of the animals, the rabbits, the chickens, the goats, and it's part of that life skill training along with academics that's so very important. I was excited to talk, to see the celebrity lip sync, but I'm going to leave that to Ms. Wyatt to talk about. That was the first year that I ever visited and I cannot even describe what our superintendent was wearing. I've never worn heels that high myself, but it was an amazing performance.
Platform disco shoes.
It was amazing performance of an Elton John classic. But anyways, I'm sure Ms. Wyatt will catch us up. Congressman Franklin, I visited his office and I encouraged other people as well to visit your legislators. Our congressmen would be helpful, all of them, in funding the law from the 70s that allows children with disabilities to attend school. It's called IDEA, I-D-E-A. When it was created, the federal government was supposed to send 40% of the funding to the states so that children with all disabilities could attend school. They've never funded it over about 16%. It currently sits at 14.5% while we still have the mandates and make sure, to make sure every child gets a free and appropriate public education. It takes funding to do that. So I was very grateful that the congressman's office staff sat with me to review what that looks like and what we could do to make improvements. Ridge Community, now that we've opened the other high school in Davenport, I got to visit out there and see that they are not as crowded. They're still a very large campus and they were doing amazing things. I visited the students in the transition program as well as the students in the television production. And I was in that as a child and I'm sure Mr. Allen has referenced, what these kids are provided in a public setting with the green screens and the cameras and the lighting equipment. At USF, I didn't even have that kind of equipment as a college student. So it's exciting to see those opportunities given to our high school students. I was grateful for Mr. Lewis in the L4 shop. He greeted me with everyone that works there into the galley and we had a great, long discussion about what it's like to work in maintenance and to work our electricians and our plumbers and the talented people we have that you don't have to go to a catalog and pay 10 times what a table or a bureau would cost when they can make it right there in their shops. So we appreciate all of their work and I hope we can make their lives easier and bring more people on in those shops as we keep going. The Great American Teaching, I was at Jesse Keen, which is one of my favorite schools. Great to see the students there, amazingly well behaved and eager to listen to my stories I was telling. I don't think I'm that interesting, but they sure thought I was for 30 minutes. So that was fun. I want to mention Mr. Burdick and the theater program at Lake Gibson. If you've never been to a theater, a show at Lake Gibson High School, it has a beautiful theater that I didn't even know was there and I live in North Lakeland. And they put on a wonderful production of juvie. I had to balance between that and the playoff game. I was exiting the show, the buses were pulling up because the playoff game was rained out. So my district was playing each other, so that was helpful for me that I didn't have to run from Lake Gibson to Auburndale. But those students came back, they were excited, they weren't down, it got rained out, they still had a lot of energy. That's Lake Gibson, that's our community. So I really enjoyed seeing that. One other quick mention of our volunteer programs, AmeriCorps. We need volunteers in our schools, we need people reading to our children. If you're interested in helping students or getting to know students, their faith-based organizations are already in our schools. There's AmeriCorps that has readings, opportunities available, and we're always willing to take more volunteers in. So as we open back up and allow volunteers in, I hope that our community takes part in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller and Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And first, let me say congratulations on being elected chair of the board and I want to also congratulate Ms. Miller on her election as vice chair. You know, I think that we have seen a little uptick in our funding for the school district. I'm not sure yet if that's a product of our growth or maybe the use of ESER funds, but we have seen a small increase in our fund balance. I think that's a positive thing. So I think we're going to have a good year. When this board appointed Superintendent Hyde, y'all might recall that he was not my first choice. And after he was appointed, I called him and congratulated him and we had a very cordial conversation. At the end of the conversation, he said, "Are we good?" And I said, "We are good. We're good because there are seven of us for a reason." And, you know, we all make mistakes. And clearly, you know, I'm not saying I made a mistake, but I am saying we hired the right person, we brought the right person here to lead our school district. We've seen some, I think, some very wise promotions, both internally, from the internal to our organization as well as external. I think we have a very strong financial team in place with the promotion of Mr. Pitts and Ms. Jenkins. I feel very confident in their ability to manage the finances of this district. So I think we're going to have a good year. I'm very optimistic about the coming year and looking forward to serving. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. And I just would like to make some brief remarks. I'll save lip sync for last, don't worry, Mr. Hyde. But first, I just want to thank my colleagues for entrusting me to be your chair for the next year. I'm honored and it's a privilege to serve you, so thank you for your confidence in me. Next, I want to talk a little bit about prize patrol because, Dr. Allen, I think District Four is going to give you a run for your money this year in January. So we got to spend the morning at Karen Siegel with Ms. Ashley Brannan, who is their resource teacher, and just watching her walk in the room and the very first thing she did was go and love on her kids. And she was just more excited to see them, I think, than any of us or the banner or the check. She just was truly so excited to get some extra time with her kids. She had one of her students, it's a special needs school, one of her students has some communication barriers, but is using eye contact with a computer screen, is able to communicate. And just watching her repeatedly, as other people were speaking, say, "I love you and you're the best teacher ever, it will melt your heart." I don't know that there was a dry eye in the room as she was speaking in the background. It just was a really cool experience. And Ashley Brannan is just a wonderful teacher and we're so lucky to have her. and we're so lucky to have her in Polk County, but specifically in District 4. Then we got to go to Brigham Academy to celebrate our school guardian, who is our school-related employee of the year. And I just want to remind everyone that District 4 has now two years in a row had a school guardian, which is exciting for our new positions to be recognized. But if you have ever tried to sneak 20 people onto campus without the school guardian knowing, it is quite the feat. We've had, "There's a fire outside, we need you to go check." "The fence has been breached," I believe was this last one. Then getting him to come back inside, because he had not yet found the breach in the fence. And, you know, I can't, I've got to do my job. It just is so exciting to see John Winghart honored. And then the highlight for me was when he walked out the door, he did not know that the entire school would be lining the main hallway cheering "We are proud of you" over and over again. And I think we got him to shed a couple tears, too, which is always fun. So congratulations to all of our Prize Patrol winners, and I can't wait to see our event in January, because you all represent our districts and our schools so well. Finally, the announcement you've all been waiting for, and I'm going to invite my special friends to make it with me. This is one of our, this is actually Ms. Miller, so she is the one who donated to have a big Fred Hyde head that gets to live at her house now, which is a little creepy. But, so, Mr. Hyde participated in lip sync last week and rocked it. He did a phenomenal job. Both, it was all recorded, they're still editing the videos, but I promise those will be made public. But in the name of public education, he stepped up to the plate. For those of you who have not heard the story, in his final interview, I asked him, one of his questions was, "What would your two lip sync songs be?" And he thought it was this very deep, this is like a make or break it deal question. And I genuinely just wanted to know what his two lip sync songs were going to be if he came as superintendent. But he did an awesome job. I'm proud to say that we raised $37,903 for public education in Winter Haven. You can applaud that, that's pretty exciting. But it was such a fun night, and thank you to Mr. Hyde and your team who did a phenomenal job. For those of you, as your backup dancers, if they're interested in being a lead performer next year, feel free to send them my way. We do accept nominations. But thank you so much for participating. He also had the opportunity to borrow clothes from Theater Winter Haven for his costume and chose to purchase his own flashy jacket and shoes. So I don't know what that means, but you're superintendent, ladies and gentlemen.
We'll be auctioning this off at a later date.
But in all seriousness, thank you so much for participating. We appreciate you and all that you do for our district. And that will conclude my report, and next will be our public comment, which first up will be Royal Brown, and on deck will be J.J. London.
Well, good evening, school board members. My name is Royal Brown III. I live at 3851 Gaines Drive, Winter Haven. I'm president of the 555-person Winter Haven 912 group. I taught at Winter Haven High School for 14 years. I was Teacher of the Year, and I was a finalist for the Polk County Teacher of the Year in 2005. On July 22nd, Superintendent Hyde participated in a race theory forum with two USF professors and NAACP members regarding Marxist critical race theory. As you know, Governor DeSantis has banned Florida public schools from teaching CRT. When I inquired to each of you by email as to why Superintendent Hyde was involved in this forum, I only received one response. The response included a school board policy called culturally responsive teaching. Having studied this policy, my analysis is that it opens the door for the teaching of critical race theory by those who might believe our country is systemically racist, that there are no absolute truths, only competing narratives, and that we are all either oppressors or victims. Having worked for 42 years, 25 of them in the military, 15 as a teacher, and two in the corporate world, my empirical view is that systemic racism was eliminated in the United States by the Civil Rights Acts of 1964, 1965. CRT is a Marxist concept fostered by the violent wing of Black Lives Matter who advocate the killing of law enforcement officers, defunding police and replacing them with social workers, and turning our children against our country and against each other based on race. We don't need anything that resembles critical race theory in our schools. And I ask you to reexamine your culturally responsive teaching policy because it's unrealistic and open to too much interpretation. For example, as a lifelong trainer and teacher, I see great difficulty for a teacher with a classroom full of 30-plus students of various races, ethnic groups, and cultures to teach both their subject curriculum, while, and I quote, this is from your policy, "Ensuring that we integrate examples of various races and cultures seamlessly throughout our curriculum pacing guide." Teachers who care about their children and engage them daily are already struggling to meet all your school district requirements. This additional burden of culturally responsive teaching is laden with racial, critical race theory overtones, and I ask you to review it, to remove it or change it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Next up is J.J. London. J.J. London. J.J. London, pass. Thank you. And finally, Bishop Mincy.
All right, all right, all right, all right. You chairwoman and the going-out chairwoman. Superintendent Hyde and all of these board members, and I know y'all are not happy with me. Y'all dismissed me from being the prayer man, but that's fine. That's fine. I want to say it to you because it's in my heart. I'm going to tell you what's in my heart. I was getting calls from the office of the board to be here to pray on numerous occasions. You all have tried to fix it, you can't fix it. You will never fix what God have not given you to charge. I want y'all to listen to me tonight. America is on the downward spiral. We ain't going to get no better. The world is on the downward spiral. The end is closer than you have an idea. There's an exit, just like there was an entrance, there's an exit. All of this stuff that we fight about and we argue about and we cut up about is so sad that we come here, week after week, and go through the same stuff over and over and over again, and we get nowhere. What we need to come to understand is that the Bible said, "When you knew me as God, you glorified me not as God, but you became vain in your imagination, and you took and worshiped the creature more than the Creator." We put God out of our lives. America put God out. They've become a pagan nation. They believe in anything and everything, and we trying to solve it. You can't solve it. We will never solve the problems that we have until we come back to Him and repent and ask Him for forgiveness. The sad situation that y'all talk about, critical race theory, we know it's the truth, but we need to face the truth. The truth is the only thing will set you and I free. We fight about about our children and all this stuff. It's the truth that we have done so many evil, diabolical things, and our children are destroyed. We trying to educate them, but we need to come to understand, people better get it in your psyche and in your mind and in your heart, too, that this country, America, will never, unless it come back to God. It will never, because God don't lie. He will never let you prosper. You go do some things, but the stuff that has happened got to get straight. So all I'm saying to us, we come here, we come here, we come here, y'all pushed me out, y'all pushed. But I thank God I know how to get on my knees. And I talk to Him every day for every one of you men and women that sit on this board. I call your name to Him, and I say, "God, remember so-and-so, remember so-and-so, remember so-and-so." Remember their families, remember their superintendent, remember our schools, remember our teachers, remember all other people that are involved in our children. I tell Him every day I get on my knees, every day, I tell Him the same thing. And you know what? He going to answer me. I'm confident of it. I'm confident, Mr. Hyde, amen, He going to hear me, because He is my Father, and He know me by my name. I don't know what He know y'all by, but He know me. Whether it means that He know me. I've been calling on Him all my life, and I come to declare, tonight. If we want to get it straight, ask Him for forgiveness, ask for forgiveness among one another. I don't say this, I got to tell you. I remember going to Promise Keepers. Years ago, Promise Keepers was the most all-white group of people. They met in Atlanta, Georgia. I went, a pastor, white pastor, supported me to go. We went to Atlanta, and people were apologizing to me, begging for it. How many of us are willing to say, "I'm sorry"? Nobody. Oh, everybody think they're right. Y'all thank me like that. Thank God, white, white, the world, I joke with you. And people all be there, and y'all just hear.
Thank you, Bishop Mincy. And with that, and with that, we'll adjourn the meeting of the school board.